Okay, Bhubanesi, so I am not on mute, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Namaste all. First of all, we are sorry for little delayed start. We are trying to present this time to make even easier for everyone to follow through and understand. That's the reason for the delay. Also, I'm sorry for changing the topic sequence. Today, we are going to cover chapters seven and chapter eight in today's session. Sri Vimal Velaniji, who is one of the architects of this WEE-DAT course, is presenting today. Vimalji is a Vedic knowledge seeker. He is a spiritual personality. He has been dealing, he has been working with peoples of young age in imparting the Vedic knowledge, learning with them together and then we teaching them as well. He has a big youth group of people who are learning the Vedic knowledge from him. Great knowledge seeker, he has great concepts of the Vedic knowledge and then he imparts the Vedic knowledge in very effective way. So it's a privilege that got Vimal Velaniji to come and present to us these topics today. And now let Vimalji speak and then we all can be muted. The way the sequence of the, of the talk would be that for the first half hour, Vimalji will start on the chapter seven and then he will give a five to 10 minutes open forum for the questions. Then he will start on the chapter eight and then that will be followed by the question and answers again. Again, welcoming Vimalji and you all for joining the call today to learn Vedic knowledge and get prepared for the Vedic Dharma Aputut. Vimal Velaniji.
Namaste everyone. Thank you for the introduction, Vishwaji. I do work with kids and professionally I am same as you. I work my daily life but besides that, having inclination towards spiritual growth is one of the focus that I have always kept because of the family background I received. I'm very thankful first to Ishwar, who has always been an inspiration in my life through my, through the process of what I go through and he enlightens me to walk the righteous path. And I every day pray to him for that. Secondly, I'm thankful to Aripathinidisaba of America, who has initiated this wonderful program for which there was a gap for a long, long time. And all, all the great souls are contributing to this. My hat's off to them because this is not an easy task by any means. Third, I'm thankful to all the students who have enrolled and their parents who are not enrolled but are still listening and trying to push this envelope as far as it can be pushed. Right, so with that we'll start. I hope everybody is able to see the PowerPoint presentation which I'm presenting. If you are not, then please do, please do let us know. Right, if you are on the audio, then obviously you won't be able to see but I would still be able to, we should be able to understand the concepts of it anyway. I'll start with the mantra. Om Sahnavatuh Sahnavu Bunaktu Sahaviryam Garvavahey Tejasvinavadhitamastu Madhyavishavahi Om Shanti Shanti Shanti. May the Lord protect us both, may he nourish us both, may he make us strong, may we be brilliant in our studies, may we never have disputes, oh peace, peace. The objective of this session is to have a discussion, to understand something, but the key point is we should not live with disputes. We can discuss, we can agree and agree not to agree or disagree, but still getting our minds clarified of what we are doing learn is more important than anything else. The objective of this sessions is to prepare the students for WEE-DAT, that is the primary focus. Learn about our Vedic Dharma is a secondary part. But I would like to switch that. Learning about Vedic Dharma is primary and preparing for WEE-DAT is secondary. Take this exam as something that you're going to gain out of it. It is not how much you score on it, how much you know, it is what you understand and that is the third points. We want to understand the Ws of our practices, why, what, when and which. The approach partly which Vishwaji already presented. The material is going to be in line with the curriculum. This is based on the feedback we got that the young minds who are trying to learn this, it is difficult for them to follow when we are not going in the same sequence or in same lines of what is covered in the curriculum that was already given to you. So I have tried my best to keep the curriculum in line with it. I would move some, in some sections little bit forward or backward, but it would be still in line with the curriculum. The content material which has been presented here is appropriate for age group eight through 12 or maybe little bit higher, eight through 15. I have tried to focus on that, so you will not see a whole lot of that. That doesn't mean whoever are listening that that is not significant. That is significant, but I want to make sure that what are, what they, we are trying to teach them and test them against, the content is appropriate at that age group. Focus on use of English vocabulary. I don't want to use any heavy Sanskrit words or mantras, which then takes the focus away from the learning process. I will introduce some Sanskrit words that are free and necessary to be known. I have added quiz questions to validate what we are understanding as we go along. So your focus stays in, this is like a wake up call. If you have fallen asleep, then this is the time to wake up. Lastly, we'll have a question answer session to make this interactive. We'll cover two topics during this one and a half hour. One is yoga. We want to understand the misconceptions, meaning of the word yoga and primarily the eight limbs of yoga, which is known as Ashtang Yoga. Yajna, again same way, we need to understand the meaning of what that word means, what is havan or agnihatra, benefits of performing havan and five essential daily duties of a human being. Right, so this is by far topics, the red ones are is where we'll focus more. The other ones are covered, but they have very little material behind it because it is just setting the preliminary grounds for the topics which are to come. Having said that, let's start with the first topic of yoga. And when that topic is over, we'll have a quiz and we'll have a question answer session. Pronunciation of this word is very critical. If you, when you, if you look at your curriculum book, the word yoga is spelled without an A to N, which is unconventional in terms of how that word is normally written. What is the reason behind that? In Sanskrit, there is a long and short vowels, right? A long vowel is pronounced elongated like as ah, as opposed to ah. If you go, if you go in your room where nobody wants to hear your shouting and say that word loudly, you will see that at the end of the word yoga, there is an ah sound, it ends with an ah sound. And every letter in Sanskrit or in Hindi or in Gujarati will end with a letter A, which is not silent pronounced but not audible, highly audible either. So that's what, hence we have tried to keep it simple so that students learning this kind of things, vocabulary in America or in Western world can easily pronounce this and do a correct pronunciation. So the correct pronunciation of this word is yoga and not yoga because that is the second option which has been shown here with two As. You're elongating that A sound. Interpretation of the word itself, it is sad that people misinterpret the meaning of word yoga or what yoga really means, right? They tie this word to physical exercise or breathing exercises. If you go and Google, who is your best friend? And just type the word yoga, if you type yoga, nothing will show up which is meaningful. If you type in the word yoga, then you will see that it has lot of hits and majority of them are talking about yoga studios or breathing exercise or stress related or stress management. But very hardly anything will show up which talks about spiritual growth. Right? What we are trying to say here that physical exercise and practice of breathing are part of yoga, but they are only two parts of the eight limbs of yoga. And if you really look at it, it only one-fourth of yoga. And if you really dive deeper and dice it down, then it is only one-eighth of, both of them together is only one-eighth of the yoga what we are going to talk about. Right? Second misinterpretation which I found was widely it has been understood that yoga is just suppressing or repressing our thoughts and emotions. That is also a huge misconception. Yoga never says that you should suppress or repress your thoughts and emotions. Thoughts and emotions are part of our life and they should stay. Managing those thoughts is what yoga teaches us. How do I manage myself? How do I manage my mind? How do I manage activities of my mind? So I can do what I want to do rather than what my mind is telling me to do. Right? So that is, that those are, and then there are many others, but this, this are essentially what primarily I would like you to at least keep in mind. Introduction to yoga, meaning of the word. As it's, you can see here, there are four different meanings. Unite, join, to become or to get absorbed. All of them to say is that bringing something together is yoga. What is that something? The contextual, contextual meaning of this is we want to unite ourselves with Ishwar, God, Paramatma, Parameshwar, all those words, the synonyms of each other and we call it God if you're using an English vocabulary, right? But it is important to know that God, what is its corresponding Sanskrit word or Hindi word we use because that word is going to appear in so many texts, in different ways and forms and we need to make sure that we understand those words. So those words are important. Right? Experiencing the bliss, when, when one is united with God, he experiences the highest level of bliss that he would not have during his normal life, in day-to-day life, right? So that is what it means in terms of what we discuss here under the topic of yoga. The purpose of yoga, right? Purpose of yoga, if, if I want, if I want to see or realize God, then the purpose of yoga is to lead me there. Right, we all seek to be free from suffering. Ishwar Stuti Pratna Upasana mantra starts with that. Oh God, take away all my debt or all the suffering from me and give me all the auspicious objects. Right, we ask for auspiciousness, in the same breath, we say, take away everything that, from which I suffer. Yoga is an approach, is a pathway to, which leads us there. How do I get to a stage where I'm free? We feel suffer because of bondage. For example, when you come from school and, and your mother tells you, you cannot watch TV today, which has been your regular exercise. You come from school, you put your books aside and watch TV for 20 minutes, 15 minutes. Your mother tells you not to do that. Restraining you from doing something gives you pain. You suffer, you feel mentally suffered that why am I, why am I put in the box today? I'm not allowed to watch TV today. Right? Same thing happens, someone comes at your home and mom says you have to behave today. You feel the same that why am I asked to do something like this, right? When somebody asks you to do something, it feels that you are bonded by something. So God has given us this body in which he has put us as an Atma. We feel bonded by this body and that's why we feel pain with this body when we are not allowed to do things which are not appropriate or sometimes we feel pain because it hurts mentally also. Right, so that yoga teaches us how, how to manage that, how, how to get away from that? How do I relieve from that bondage? How do I relieve from that suffering? Definition of the word yoga. This is how Yoga Darshan or Yoga Sutra starts, which was given to us by Maharishi Patanjali. Yogas Chitthi Vritti Nirrodh. Again, what does this word mean, right? If you look in Sanskrit, it's a runaway word, that word is like one single word. If you break down, there are four different words underneath there. Yoga of course means yoga, chitthi means mind, vritti means activity and nirrodh means control. In Sanskrit, you would read from left to right and it will make proper meaning. In English, you, if you read the reverse, control, activity, mind and yoga, then it gives you a proper meaning saying controlling activities of a mind is yoga. Right? So that is what yoga means. So now go back to the misconception of what people are saying about yoga, that it is physical exercise, it is a breathing exercise. Yes, it is all those because eight limbs of yogues do include those two, but the definition of yoges is controlling activities of mind is yoga. Now, why would I do yoga? Why would I practice yoga? If somebody doesn't tell you that there is a benefit at the end of the activity you are doing or the efforts you are making, then you won't be inclined to do those activities. Right? Mom or dad may ask you to do some chores and if they don't tell you that what you, as reward you are going to get out of the chores, you won't be too much enthusiastic to do that chores, right? So here are merits and demerits of what you can, what benefits you can get when you control your mind, i.e. you practice yoga. Let's talk about the demerits. What happens if you don't practice yoga? That is what happens to most of us in day-to-day life. We are stressed, we are restless, not during the whole day, but there are parts of our days or sometimes a day a week where we are stressed. Ideally, I am stressed when I have to go back to work on Monday after a very nice weekend. Right? Why am I stressed? I need to think about that. Your thoughts are running away, you have no control over your thoughts. When you sit down and try to think about one subject, several other pops up. This happens to us in meditation a lot. All day long, a thought doesn't come to my mind, but I sit down in meditation, close my eyes and all of a sudden, there are zillion thoughts running around all over the place, trying to block me from meditating, trying to block me for thinking about what I want to really think about. I lose control over it. Right, so lack of control. That results into six vices, which are widely known as desires, delusion, anger, pride, greed and jealousy. And you might have heard this in Sanskrit and Hindi, kam, kruth, lob, moh, mad, matsuriya. Right? Against that, what are the merits? You are free from restlessness, your mind is at peace, you're, you're so calm and quiet and poised. You have a responsive thinking, somebody asks you a question, you know how, how to answer it, how much to answer, how effectively to explain that? That's what a responsive mind does. You just not focus it in your answers. You are very clear and very crystal. You have to give instructions to someone, you know exactly how to give it and you will give it based on the person who is asking you the question. For example, when someone asks you for direction, if it's an old person, you will raise your voice a little bit. Right? If it is a kid, then you will rather hold his hand and walk him through. Right, so there are different ways how you respond. Your responsiveness depends how clearly your mind is thinking. If you treat everyone as the same, or a young child and an old person, then you're not thinking clear, what are the consequences of the information you are giving? If you give instructions to a young child to say that, hey, just cross the road and make a left, is the child capable of actually crossing that road? Right? So that is what responsive thinking means. Inclines toward virtuous actions, it, it helps you progress and become a virtuous person. Right, you, you will embrace qualities that will alleviate your life rather than that will pull you down. Next one is focus, which is very important and young, young childrens who are in school, this is very critical. You are always focused, that helps you study material which is difficult to understand. Some things that are very, are things that do not come to you naturally, you can grasp those subject matters. Lastly, it prepares you for further progress on the path of yoga and leads you to your ultimate goal. Then the million dollar question, how do I control my mind? If there are all these benefits to controlling the mind, then how do I control my mind? As I mentioned earlier, Maharishi Patanjali gave us Yoga Darshan, which has about 200 sutras in there. That sutras explains how to control our mind. He was an expert in that area that he wrote this very little book. It's only 200 sentences and that, the Sundan sentences are short, but is full of information that explains the entire detail of how we control. So just reading those and understanding that, reading is not important, understanding those and practicing is more important. So, and practice, practice for couple of days, 10 days, 15 days. It's not a sixth month course. It is long time and it's constant, constant practice that will then master you how to control your mind. Right, so that are the two key elements. It is long term and it has to be a consistent practice. Right, so what are these techniques of yoga? We were given to us by Maharishi Patanjali, right? Which are the inner working, explains the inner working of the mind and is a blueprint of controlling our mind. There are eight in number and 16 as we see them. How do they get from eight to 16? We'll see that in a little one, but ideally they are eight and then two of them are broken down into pieces of five. That's, that's how they become 16. So it's yam, nim, asan, pranayam, pratyaar, dharana, tyan and samadhi. That is the left inside of this block. And go, as you read through this, you also need to know their corresponding English words, but it is very important that you at least know these eight names, which are known as the eight limbs of yoga. Limbs are parts of your body, ang means part of your body and asth means eight. So it's also known as Ashtang Yoga. Quiz. There are four questions, we'll take about a minute to answer these questions. Now this is a non-interactive sessions, so do your best and see how many of this you get right. I'll give you a minute. The questions are, what is the meaning of yoga? The options are to separate, to unite, physical exercise, deep breathing, none of the above. Question number two. Yoga teaches us how to control our mind, there's a mistake there. Astronomy, physics, following our duties, all of the above. The control of mind feels inactive, restless, peaceful, promote vices, none of the above. And the last question is, yoga is only about exercise, true or false? 15 more seconds and then we move on. Okay, so let's start talking about what is yam, right? That is the first limb of yoga and that is where we start. Yams are universal morals. Yams are broken down into five, five characteristics or wise characteristics. Yams are to be followed by mind, body and speech. All three are very critical, right? Whenever, we can do actions by our hands, our legs, our speech. So it is separating the two, that when you do actions with your hands and legs, it is different from your speech. And then we also do action by our mind, which is something, if you have not heard about this, then it finds strange, how do I act through my mind? So let's a little bit, look at this a little bit in detail, right? When I'm working, I'm making something, I'm writing, I'm using my hands and that is an action performed by hand, that is what is meant a physical action. So that is action by body. Right? Now with my hand, I can be very used, doing some useful things or I can be doing some harmful things. Example of harmful things, I could punch someone. Example of a good act is I could hug someone with those same hands. Right? Speech, I could be nice and I could be kind, I could be saying kind words through my speech. At the same time, I could use abusive words, I could use words full of anger against, with someone and that is an example of saying that you are using your speech in the wrong way and hurtful speech. Right? And lastly, with the mind, this is a little bit tricky. You act with the mind is like you say that somebody was so nice to me today. You didn't express through your words or your body action, but you just say it in your mind that someone was very kind to me. And when somebody hurts you, you doesn't say anything, but you still say that he was mean to me. That action is taking place in your mind. When you don't like someone, the way he's acting, instead of saying anything, you just say in your mind that he is an idiot, excuse my language. Right? That is acting through your mind. So what these morals are saying, that action is performed by anyone, any one of these three ways and all of them have to be considered when you are following yams. Second thing about the yams, they are universal in nature, they don't change. A yum is a yum, whether you are doing actions here or in India or somewhere else in the world, it is same, someone living here has to observe them in the same way or someone living away from here has to observe in the same way. Right? And as always, if there is no benefit to following this, then why should I be following? What will it do to you? It will bring compassion, generosity, honesty, peacefulness in your heart. And those are the good virtues to embrace. It makes you a better person at all levels. It makes you good here, it good, you makes you good anywhere. If you are kind, people will like you here, will people like you in Germany? It does not matter. You can express your compassion, generosity and honesty without saying a single word. These are our duties and responsibility, we have to follow them. So with that, we start with what are the five yams? There are five yams and five niams. Right, five yams, yams are about how do you conduct yourself out in the society? How do you conduct yourself with others? Right? So first one is non-violence. Right, ahimsa, it's the Sanskrit corresponding word is ahimsa. It's important to remember this word, ahimsa. Ahimsa is to hurt, when you put a in front of it, becomes a negative, so it's not to hurt. So what is the yum saying? It's saying that do not hurt anyone, anyone's meaning, any living being, not only humans, right? Anything that is living is not to be hurt. And that is where we say that we are vegetarians because we don't want to see those animals hurt. Right, so when you say that, you are following ahimsa. It will, it, it will promote compassion, love and kindness in your heart. When you love someone, you are not going to hurt them. It's very simple. As we said, it has to be followed by body, mind and speech. Right? You, sometimes you will say nice words to someone or you will not hit them, but in your mind, you will say, I don't like him, he's not good to me. That is also not fine, ahimsa, or you will think about an evil thought about him. That is not good. That is not good and that's not following ahimsa either. Second one is truth. Again, you see there is universality, right? Truth is a truth, following non-violence is following non-violence, right? Everyone has to follow. It is not for just for us Hindus or it's not just for Christians, it's for everybody, right? Truth is being truthful. And that's a very simple one to understand, but it is not only about truthful by speech, right? Sometimes we talk behind someone's back, like gestures with our body, right? And that means that I don't agree with him or I don't like him, right? So those gestures also count and they talk about or tell something about us. So we need to conduct ourselves in a way that we are truthful, we are clear and the message has got across. This will build, foster relationships and healthy relationships. Next one is not, not stealing, astaya, right? Astaya means, non-stealing in general means that don't take things that don't belong to you, right? Yog Dharshan goes a little bit further and says that if some, something is lying there and the owner of that particular item or that particular thing is not there, then do not even take it without his permission. And so how, how detailed it works through or how depth it looks at things of stealing is slightly different than we normally conventionally understand stealing, right? It says that if something does not belong to you, you should not take it without owner's permission. Next is sense, sense control, brahmacharya. Now this one you will find slightly different definitions in different books, I try to make it as simple as possible. Observing discipline or self-control or self-restraint is the ideal way to put this, right? And that which makes our behavior responsible, responsible in a way that we can move forward in the goal of life. So something that hinders your progress is not good for you, that's what it says. And the last one is non-griddiness, right? It is slightly different from non-stealing, but it says, don't be greedy, don't take what you need rather than what your needs, wants are driving you. It's a distinction between your needs and your wants. To acquire something in access is not good, right? There is a saying that access of everything is poison. Access of money is also poison, right? We see that people who have more money have more troubles, right? So that's what it says, that do not be greedy, right? The other thing which it also highlights that when you are greedy, you have a fear or you don't have faith in God. God gives us everything for free and we, we keep on accumulating it. We don't share with anyone, right? So that is where greediness also steps a little bit deeper than that, that it also tells a little bit more about the person when someone is greedy, that he does, is really fearful of losing everything. It also makes us attached to things, right? So and it makes us dependent of thing. For example, if mom gives you a scoop of ice cream every other day in summer, right? That is a good thing, but if you develop a habit of saying that one is not enough, I need two. If mom gives you two, then she cannot share a scoop with your brother or sister, right? So you're being selfish, you're being greedy about it, that I always have to two, otherwise I'm not satisfied. Now you're attached to that, that if I don't get two, I'm not satisfied, right? Satisfaction is also addressed in the next part of the niyams. If yams are how you deal with the society, the niyams are how you deal with yourself. What standards have you set for yourself so you can rise up? So those are rules for your own self, how do you behave? How do you conduct yourself? The yams are behavior with others and niyams are how you conduct yourself, right? The other way I look at yams and niyams is, yams are about, are about don'ts and niyams are about do's, right? Yams talk about no violence, don't do violence, don't speak a lie, don't be greedy, don't steal, don't lose sense control, right? Niyams are all about things we need to do so that we can set high standards for us. So the first one there is cleanliness. Again, very easy to understand, everybody likes a clean person and someone wearing dirty clothes is really not something is likable or is, if he stinks, so he is, he has a bad, he has a bad sweat, he never showers, right? But when it comes to Yog Dharshan, it talks about two types of cleanliness, one is internal and another is external. So our clothes, our body, things around us, how organized our desk is, how organized our room is, that all fall into external cleanliness, right? Or external purity. Internal purity is purity of mind, right? How, how do we, do we, dirty thoughts rise in our, in our mind? Do we anger ourselves? We don't say it, but we are still angry, we have resentment towards someone, that is all considered as uncleanliness of mind. And when Yog Dharshan talks about cleanliness, it talks about it both levels. Contentment, this is the opposite of what we are talking a while ago about greediness, right? Contentment, satisfaction, right? Being satisfied means what? Whatever I have, whatever earned with best of my efforts, I'm happy with it. So be happy with what you have rather than worrying about what you don't have. That is definition of satisfaction, right? When you are satisfied, your mind is always going to be at peace because you are not thinking about future. We carry stress because of that reason. You always think and especially in adults, I need to have this, I need to have this, I need to have this. And when your mind is running about what I need to have rather than enjoying what you have, you are really building stress. This is a very good technique to get rid of stress. If you cultivate a mind that is satisfied with what you have, then you will be a much happy person. Top, austerity, right? Austerity is about practicing or becoming resilient, right? You try to do your best against all the odds. For example, those of you who play sports or team sports, if your team is not doing well, do you give up or you still keep fighting until the game is over, right? Austerity is saying that I do not give up until the game is over. I will accept the consequences after the game is over. Until then, I am a competitor, I'm a hard driver, I play to win, right? So that resiliency and most of good players, sports players will have this. If they don't have it, I don't think they will be classified as a good player and they are trained for this kind of things, right? So that is what austerity means. In our case, it is, we have gone a spiritual path, if we are working towards something, if I'm trying to meditate, I sit down there for half an hour, I'm not able to meditate, right? After a week, do I give up or do I still stay on that path, right? What the scripture says, what Yog Dharshan says, what yoga says, continue, you will get there, right? To be able to meditate, to be able to realize God takes a daunting task. So the effort you will have to put is also daunting, right? You cannot give up. So not giving up is austerity, not giving up against all the odds. Self-study. This one is the list of all we do, right? Self-study is study of scriptures, right? Why scriptures, why vedic scriptures? Because we are on the path, as we say that objective of this exercise, objective of yoga is oneness with God, to unite with God. We always say that I can't see God, how come I cannot see God? How come I cannot touch God? If you really want to touch God or see God, you are not going to see by your physical senses, you are going to see through realization, using mind as your tool. Without the mind, you are not going to be able to get there. So study helps you in that process and study of vedic scriptures helps you in particular, right? It helps you keep and develop, cultivate good conduct, morals, values and keeps you on a righteous path. So it's important to have study and it has to be a regular study, just like we are doing today, right? Because we date exam is coming very soon, we all get here on Sunday rather than spending time at some party or at some friend's place, we get together and learn about something. This learning should not stop here, it should continue, right? And that continuation is very important. Read a page of a book which talks about how can you become a better person, right? What can I do to become a better person? Read some life of a great rishi or a freedom fighter or a saint or a sage, that all falls in this category, right? We all know that you read novels, you read much books or related to your work or your studies, that do not fall in these categories. You do your algebra homework will not fall in these categories, but you reading a moral story will fall in this category. And we do read, but we don't have a consistency in there. So try to bring consistency in this and then you are following yoga. And the last one, as we say, our ultimate goal is to realize God, right? If you want something, then you have to be dedicated. So dedicate yourselves to God. It's a very lofty sentence I made, right? To be dedicated to someone, you should have full faith in you. For example, you have full faith in your parents because they do everything for you. You are so confident that if I am in trouble, my parents will always be helping me out of that trouble, right? You have unconditional faith, unconditional confident in what your parents will do for you or your grandparents will do for you, right? You need to have that same, same confident when you think about God, that God will never let me down, he'll, all is always there for me and as a result of it. But this unconditional faith comes from where? Because you understand your parents, you have this unconditional faith. You need to understand who God is, what are his attributes, what he does for us, how he does for us, when he does for us. If you understand those all wise events and hows, then you will start developing faith towards him. Otherwise, it's very difficult to have faith in God saying, or it's just a statement we make, right? So having full dedication to him is known as isha pranam. So those were the five yams and five niyams, ten in all, which are universally practiced or should be practiced, right? Yam is your conduct with others, niyam is how you conduct yourself, at what standards you hold yourself, how high you want to rise, higher your standards, higher you will go, right? Asan is about physical, so this is where what most of the people say yoga is, right? They say it's all about physical exercise. Yes, physical exercise is important. If you are not physically healthy, then how are you going to really be able to control your mind? You're always worrying about your health, right? So asans will promote strong health and body, it helps, increases your longevity and it helps in the entire overall growth of your body. Next one is pranayam, which is known as breath control, right? So breath control is the next one after asan, right? It does the same thing for you, but this works out at an energy level. It regulates your energy, which is known as a pranayam. When you are angry, someone will say, hey, take a deep breath. Why are they saying that? Because taking a deep breath is going to relax your mind, is going to take the focus away from the mind from what you are angry about, right? So that's the mechanics of how the mind is redirected on some other subject matter and helps you balance, balance itself before it tips over. Next one, this is very important and critical, control of senses. These days, I've seen children, they do homework, they also listening to music, the TV is on and the homework is still happening. This is actually in a problem in that sense, right? That is what this talks about. How do you control yourself? Again, I'm not saying that music does not soothe you and help you do homework, but in, at my, when I was your age, I was never able to do that. If I listen to music, my homework goes stray, I get a C or a D on it. It was as simple as that, right? So control of senses, pratya har means withdrawing, aha means food. So you are taking away food, taking away fruit from whom? Your senses, right? For example, imagine yourself, you are watching a movie on your television, you switched off all the lights and all of a sudden electric city goes away, the power cuts off. Now the room is pitch dark, your eyes cannot see anything, you have cut off the object from your vision. That is what this is talking about. When that happens, your mind now gets redirected from, from what it was watching to do something else. That is sense control, right? How do we control? But we need to control this voluntarily. In the example I gave you, there is a shortfall, the electric city is one which actually made that cut, cutoff happen, right? So what we are saying here is how can I voluntarily switch off my senses so that my mind is free to do better things? In this regards, better things is to think about subject matters that matter most to reach my goal, right? The example given in the bottom is just like energy saving bulb, right? Energy saving bulb does not waste a bit of energy, so it lasts longer. If you are able to con, control your senses, your mind will be free to do much better things. Next one is dharna. When you have cut off your senses, the next thing is okay, now the mind is free to do, right? What should the mind do? It's able to focus on things you want the mind to do, right? It's able to find its goal and then it focuses on that goal. Your goal may be to study and is, is the exam you have tomorrow. So you could be watching TV and let your senses run around, or you could switch off the TV and say that, hey, my eyes should focus on reading for which I'm going to appear on a test tomorrow. So your mind will be able to focus more. If you are able to control and voluntarily, that will switch off your senses. So that is concentration, developing the concentration, a very important quality to have, very important practice to be learned while you are a student. In the curriculum which you have been given, there's a story about Arjun and Dronacharya, why Arjun was his, was his most or the best student he had. You should read that story and try to relate it to this topic. Dhyana, meditation. Once you have developed the technique of concentration, then comes, how long can I hold that concentration, right? If you can hold it uninterruptedly or not allowing it to distract, not allowing your mind to distract, then that is known as dhyana. So there is a subtle switch from dharna to dhyana, from step number six to seven. If you are able to focus for a longer period of time, and this is voluntarily, sleep does not come for it. Some people will say that, hey, I'm focusing and I'm sleeping, that does not, because sleep is not voluntary, your mind is not, you cannot control your mind. You're talking about control of minds, at every point you have, should be aware and conscious, right? So that is the key difference. Meditation is about uninterrupted concentration, that is the best way to put it. In that state of the mind, your mind is In that state of the mind, your mind is so focused, it can start learning about subject matters that are so difficult to learn. Right? And that is skill to be learned. You can train yourself, you can learn, like this yogi here. What is he saying? He's reciting Om. Right? And he's able to focus on that sound for a longer period of time. That's when it's saying that he's really meditating. If there is interruptions, then you are still in the previous state. You are in the dharana state. Yes, you're not letting your senses take away your mind, but you're still not able to hold. So, when you're able to hold for a longer period of times, it's known as meditation. The last one and last of the eight limbs of yoga is the super-conscious state of. In this state, you are actually, the subject matter of what you are thinking about, you're concentrating about has to be God. Because your ultimate goal, as we said, is to unite with God. This is the stage where you unite with God. The soul realizes God. The thing I'm going to read off this is a red line. You make sure that you understand this. The soul realizes God but does not merge with God or become God. It is in company with God. Right? So, it's able to feel and sense God if you want to look at it that way, but it does not become God. Lot of places you will read that it becomes God. That is not a correct statement. It is ignorance. Right? In this state of mind, we are blissful, we are happy, we are free from all the worries. We have nothing else to worry about. We are just enjoying the state we are in. This is the next quiz. We'll give you a minute and then open up for question answers. Now, read off the questions and you can follow if you are on audio or you can do it yourself, we are on a video. Which statement is correct? There are four yams and five niams. There are five yams and four niams. There are four yams and four niams. There are five yams and five niams. None of the above. Question number two. Niam is how we behave with others. True or false? Again, niam is how we behave with others. Is this statement true or false? Next question. Pratyaar is control of mind, control of senses, focus on single object, state of union with God? The last question. What helps learn complex subjects? Super-conscious state? State of concentration? State of meditation? Control of senses? There's a typo there, sorry. Observing yams and niam. Okay, we'll move on. Now, the session is open for question and answer on this topic. Again, like Vishwajit say, I'm not a vaidvan, I'm a student like you. And I'll do my best. If we cannot answer the question, we'll, we will get that question answered by someone who is at that level to answer that question and give you clarity on this subject matter. Bunas, you can open.
So, thank you, Ramoji. That was really, really well put together. And first of all, I want to thank you for putting it together last minute. I know we had a scheduling change. And just personally, I do want to put a comment. It's probably the most simple but logical explanation of yoga that I've ever heard in my lifetime. I really congratulate you and look forward as a main teacher at the seminar next year. We'll talk about that offline. But just two things I have. If you could tell our viewers and listeners the answers to their questions, the quiz questions, that way they're confident and then we'll open up for questions.
Okay. I didn't expect this, but anyway, and now I'll go back, okay?
Okay.
Question number, we'll move on then we'll go to the previous quiz prior to this one, right? Which statement below is correct, right? If your answer was number four, there are five yams and five niams, that's the right answer. Second question. Niam is how we behave with others. Niam is how we hold ourselves to what standards. So, behaving with others is yam. So, that statement is false. Pratyaar, is it control of mind? Is it control of senses? Focus of single object or state of union with God? The answer is two. Control of senses. The last question on that quiz was what helps learn complex subject matter? You are able to learn complex subject matters, then your concentration is at a longer period of time. So, when you are in state of meditation and you contemplate on a subject matter, you will find answers quickly. Okay? Let's go back to the previous quiz. I hope the first one was very clear and quick on this one. What is the meaning of word yoga? If you said to unite, that's the right answer. Separate is opposite of it. Physical exercise is not the correct answers for the reasons we discussed. It only represents one-fourth or one-eighth of yoga. So, does deep breathing. Yoga teaches us how to control mind, astronomy, physics, following our duties, all of the above. We know that it's not astronomy, it's not physics. Right? Following our duties is the next section or the next part of this topic. The obvious answer is how to control our mind. Control of mind feels, this is also an easy one. When your mind is controlled, what does it feel like? Peaceful. Option three is the right answer. And the last is a very tricky, easy answer also. Yoga is only about exercise and that's a false statement. Okay? Gurus, is that good enough?
That was great. Thank you. Okay, we'll leave it, open up a couple of minutes for any question.
Namaste.
Namaste. I'm confused here. Okay, I'm on the phone.
Okay. If you're on the phone, then you will only have an audio. If you're, if you want a video, then you have to connect through your mobile devices or computer. Let's talk. Prabhaji, we will post, we post the video on some social media or YouTube and we will let you know.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions regarding yoga?
Yes, I do. This, I'm dharana and dharana. If you can explain little bit more.
What was that?
Dharana and dharana.
Okay.
Dharana, I can understand this is concentration of mind. Try to.
Yes. So, dharana is basically, okay. Your question is what is, what is the difference between dharana and dyan, right? Okay, all right. So, let's, let's start with dharana first, right? Dharana is basically concentration. Once you withdraw your mind, then your mind is now ready to focus or is available, if you want to take it in that words, that your mind is now able to focus on something. So, that something could be anything, but it does not mean that your mind can focus on that particular object for any amount of time. So, period of time for which it can focus on is the difference between the two.
Okay.
Right? Now, you have, you have understood the goal, that my goal is to go somewhere. Right? Now, if you are driving and you are driving and you are taking frequent breaks, then that represents dharana. Yet you are focused, you know where you want to go. But you are going in hops. Dyan is reducing those hops.
So, it is how, how long do I focus?
Yeah, how, how elongated for a longer period you are able to focus on? Because say, if you want to understand a complex subject matter and you're not able to keep your focus for a long time, you have too many breaks. That interruption causes the delay in understanding. Right? So, if you, if you are reading a book, say for example, you are reading a book and the book has hundred chapters. So, take an example of Vedas, right? It's a complex subject matter to understood. The reason we are not able to comprehend that text is because we read one mantra and then we get lost somewhere. When, when you have the concentration of focusing regardless of the subject matter, then you are now improving yourself to say that I'm able to grasp it because I'm not taking breaks, so I'm, I'm understanding the whole picture. So, it takes you longer to read a book if you are taking more breaks. If you have the stretch of sitting down and say that I want to finish this book today.
That is, that is dyan.
That is dyan.
Okay.
This is just an example, right?
Yeah.
So, that's the subtle difference.
Yeah, it is basically the concentration without any interruption.
Yes.
So, Ramoji, I, I have a follow-up question to that. The word dharana, does that closely translate into the Hindi word dharna? Or the act of dharana?
Okay. Dhara and dharana, two different things, right? So, you are getting closer to dhara, not dharana.
Okay.
Thank you, Vishwajit. No, this is a very, the question which you asked is really important because there's a very subtle difference between the two. And texts give you the clarity about it, but then you need to dive deeper into see the real differences between that. But at this level, as I said, for, for children's this age group, we don't want to lead them by putting some confusing words which then don't give clarity to them. So, I try to put it in the best, simple words that they can distinguish. Get it away that one is about concentration, short-term concentration and longer concentration.
So, Ramoji, I have a question for you. I know you have another chapter to go through and we're scheduled for another fifteen minutes. Do you think that's enough to cover the material?
I think if we, if we take half an hour, we started fifteen minutes late. If everyone can stay on the call for, because the next subject matter is shorter than this, then we should be able to wrap it.
Okay. So, we are recording this session. So, if you're not able to stay past nine PM, we understand. We'll share the video and the audio. So, if there aren't any more yoga questions, I'll mute everybody and we'll move to the next subject. Is that good?
Yeah.
All right.
So, the next subject we want to cover is yajna. Commonly known as panch mahayajja, you probably have heard this word if you are of my age. Otherwise, for someone younger, eight or ten, may not even have heard these words. But this is a commonly used, panch mahayajja is a very commonly used word, right? Yajja is nothing but doing your duties and doing your duty is following dharma. Right? So, how do I follow dharma? That was our session last time, right? How, how do I follow dharma? What can I do? What do I have to do rather than can do? Right? So, and this is also universal in nature, right? Everyone has to do it. There is, there is no exclusions to this process. Maybe the practice of it may differ, but they are essential and required. And you will see parallels between in Hindu philosophy or vedic philosophy and other philosophies that have been followed. You will see that there are some parallels drawn between the two, right? Slightly different, but there are. That's every human being has to follow, follow this. There are five numbers, brahm, dev, prithri, bali, veshwa, ved and atiti. Right? Fulfilling, fulfilling this duty helps us on our spiritual path. Now, we talked about yoga. Yoga is about how, how do I realize God? So, it's how, how do I stay on the path of spiritual growth? How does control of my mind help me? Right? So, here is the other practical side of it, that you have to follow dharma, right? Cannot ignore that component of it. You can't ignore your duties. You have to do what you have to do, right? You can't just go, go, go in a forest and meditate and forget about your responsibility. So, this is the flip side of it. Yes, meditation has to be part of your practice and so has to be these five components. Right? The meaning of the word yajna. Yajna comes from a root word yaj, which has three different meanings. And this is also given in your curriculum in chapter number eight. As it opens up, it talks about this. Right? First thing is worship. Worship is known as dev puja, right? So, worship is prayers, right? Respect we give to others. What, what does the word dev mean here? Right? It says someone who is selfless, who does not expect anything from us, right? Then who is, who is that entity which is so selfless and keeps on giving to us? Right? As you can see here, that that entity is Ishwar. He gives to us unconditionally, day after day, life after life. And that's why he is called Mahadev, greatest of all the dev's. Right? So, here's a very simple way to understand who is a dev. Dev is one who possesses something valuable. In order to give something, you need to first possess something and something that is valuable to someone else, not only to you. So, that is the first criteria of being a dev. Second thing, if I have something, but I'm not ready to share with you, then I'm not a dev. It disqualifies me. So, I need to have the capacity to give, right? I have a million dollars, but I never write a check of charity. I'm not a dev, right? And the third criteria, third is three criterias in itself as well. He gives, he has the capacity to give, but does not have the will to give. So, here in third one, he says, he has the capacity to give and he has the will to give. Right? And while he does that, he does it generously. Right? If I have a million dollars and I only write a cheque worth of one dollar, that's not being generous. So, it disqualifies me. So, you can see how you can get disqualified as a dev very quickly, right? I should be able to give proportionately based on where I stand and what I have. So, giving generously is, is a criteria. Giving without expectation. Out of my share, if I write a half a million dollar cheque, but then I say that I need to be on the board committee of that organization who I'm supporting. I'm expecting something back and putting a value on the donation or the charity I'm contributing to. on the donation or the charity I am contributing to. That's not a, it will get called disqualified as a dev. So you give without expectation, don't expect anything in return, then you are still qualifying as a dev. And the last one, he gives without discriminating. I gave half a million dollars to my brother, but I cannot share hundred dollars with someone who I don't know. This qualifies me as a dev. So very stringent criterias before you qualify someone as a dev. Very few will surface up on this earth as real dev. So this is, dev puja is mainly for God rather than a person. We are not saying that it is not, but you put them through these criterias and then agree or disagree and make a decision whether it's dev or not. Second thing, first thing is dev puja, second thing is good company. Keeping good company, we know that, right? If you have good friends, it, it sticks on you, it rubs off on you. Right? So that is, you will, you will take their good qualities with you and if you have good qualities, it will rub off on them. Right? Books are our good friends. Listening and reading Vedic scriptures will make you a virtuous person. Right? So promoting truth and good conduct is another thing that good company does. So good company is the second one of those. Right? We are understanding what is yajja and this is the second part of it. The third is charity. Dana. Right? Donating for worthy cause. Right? We should be careful when we donate, we have to give it to the person who deserves. A person who doesn't deserve, it's not going to really make any difference in his life. Right? So that is, that, for example, if you, if you give a cha- if you give a hundred dollar cheque to someone who has millions, it will not really matter. If you give a hundred dollars to a poor person, it does make a difference, but if that person goes and buys alcohol and drinks it off, your hundred dollars has gone to a good use or a bad use, that's what you have to think. So that was worthy of cosmin. Right? Second one, no brainer, when we give, we have to be generous. Third one, we have to give, there are different ways of giving. Right? It is not always about wealth and money, all the examples I gave were about money. Right? But that's not the only way, you can go to service, your physical service, go to a soup kitchen and serve people, help the elderly, go to a senior center and help the elderly, elderly. Right? Provide emotional support to a friend who is in need, someone is depressed, help him out, that is also, also falls in the category of dham. And obviously, the last one is sharing your wealth. So now let's look at what are the five duties. We'll go through one by one. First one is brahmi yajja. Right? Brahma is God, so the prayers to God is considered as brahmi yajja. When you are sick and you go to a doctor, one, and he says, okay, you need, you need antibiotics. You have infection, you need antibiotics. He writes up the prescription and then underneath that prescription, he will take you, he will say, take twice daily. Right? So this is what it says. Prayers are to be said frequently and it tells us how frequently it should be, say twice, twice a day at least. Can do it more if you want, but twice a day is what has to happen in the morning and the evening are the two times. Now, these are not hard and fast times, but these are the best times to pray. In the morning, you start day with some good activity, your day is good. At the end, you end your day with a good activity, your sleep is good. So it covers both domains. The other thing is also said in here is, in order to understand and pray to God in the right way, we need to understand who God is. So study of Vedic scripture is also part of this yajja. Right? You need to, as like you said, that books will promote goodness in you. If you are reading spiritual books, this, again, the books which we read, novels, fiction stories, do not count in this category. So don't just say that I read a book half an hour a day, so I am performing brahmi yajja, unless that book relates to how to improve yourself, how to live a good life, how to respect your elders. His teaching is something that's worthwhile to fulfill your goal and the goal we are talking about is how do I become a better person? How do I follow dharma? How do I fulfill my duties? This is a word of caution. Prayer is not a rote, right, right, recitation. Right? We say, oh, I said my prayers. No, it does not qualify as brahmi yajja. Right? Chanting mantras does not qualify for having satisfied this duty. It is understanding and contemplation of these teachings in the mantra which really matters. So understand the mantras which you are saying and that's why if, if you notice, when I recited the mantra, I had the meaning underneath. If I did not have the meaning underneath, you have, may have recited that mantra many, many times. If you did not understand, you are not trying to extract the full power of that mantra. I am not saying it is useless. What I am saying is if you really want to capitalize on power of that mantra, the meaning underneath is more important than the recitation of it. Second one is devyajja. Devyajja is known by two names. Commonly, havan. It is called havan because what we offer in the havan is known as havi. Right? And that offering teaches us something, it teaches us to commit to do good, good deeds and the willingness to sacrifice to reach our goals. Remember, we talked about resiliency? The same, same has been resonated here, that under all odds, I will reach my goal. Right? No matter what I have to sacrifice. Say you have a test tomorrow and you are invited to a birthday party, to one of your friends, good friend's birthday party. You sacrifice not going to the party, instead study for the test because test is your primary goal. So that qualifies as accomplishing the goal at any cost. Second name for this same yajja is known as agnihatra. Agnihatra because what we are worshipping here is agni. I don't want you to translate, agni is also known as fire, but we are not worshipping fire. Agni is also name of God. And you will learn this in chapter three, I believe, different names of God and you will see agni shows up. And agni shows up repeatedly in most of our mantras also. Right? Agni means light. Quality of the light is to reveal what you cannot see. It removes the darkness. Darkness is represented by ignorance. When ignorance go away, the knowledge will surface by itself. So it is said that knowledge is already there, if you remove the ignorance, the knowledge will surface. So key to learning is getting rid of that ignorance. Key to getting ready of the suffering is to gain knowledge. That bondage we were talking about a while ago, that I am suffering because I am bound, I am not allowed to do certain things. Mom asks me not to watch T V. There is an ignorance sitting there, mom asks me not to watch T V, mom asks me not to watch T V for a reason. Need to understand that reason, if you under- understand that reason, then you will not suffer. Right? Embracing the qualities of fire. Fire has three qualities. It gives life, warmth and rises up. So we need to become knowledgeable, we need to be loving, caring, warm, we, when, when we walk in a room, someone will say, this is a kind person. That's the warmth. Rise up against all the odds, keep rising. You may fall, but you are always going to move up, that should be your attitude. So that's what we learned from the word agnihatra and both of them I appropriate. If you then look at havan, when you go to do havan, while offering, you are sacrificing, that's the attitude you want to build, that's the quality you want to embrace. The fire, when you see the fire, you want to embrace all three qualities of fire. Let's look at benefits of havan and agnihatra. Right? It helps us bring new thoughts and transform our life. Right? How? When you recite those mantra and understand those mantras and the value which those mantras bring you or teaches you is how. Right? If you go to havan every day, not understand the mantra, week after week, you go to the temple or you go and attend your group's havan. If you don't know the mantra, you are not learning the depth of those mantra, the meanings of those mantra, then new thoughts are not going to come to you. Your life will not get transformed, you can keep on doing this for year after year after year. So key again is to make sure we understand what we are doing. Ask questions. Ask them, why am I doing this? Why, why am I putting water around the havan koon? What is the purpose behind it? Right? Ask the question, why don't we, why don't we put gear on the havan? Why water? If you are not asked this question, in the next havan, go ask your teacher that question, whoever is the acharya. And let them help you understand that. That's when new thoughts and transformation will come, when, when he explains to you, that will be the aha moment, ooh, now I got it. Right? When you get it, you build inner strength. The odds we are talking that, hey, I have to rise up against all the odds, that's the inner strength. The virtue, virtues you learn is going to pull you up. Right? The other thing, it will help you develop respect for the learned. When the acharya tells you that this is how and why havan is done, you will respect him, you will develop respect, when your parents explain it to you, you will, you will understand the wisdom they carry. Right? Besides that, havan is also commonly known for this. It's a global benefit. The samagri we put and the samida we, we put in the havan koon, the offerings we put have a lot of healing herbs in there, they are made of spe- special kinds of herb. Herbs when burned at high temperatures of the agni, it cleanses the air and the atmosphere and that is beneficial to the ecosystem. Right? It cleans the air, everybody breathes clean air, not only that, it cleans the atmosphere, we get good amount of rain, we get rain at the right time. No acid in the rain that helps good vegetation grow, so that whole cycle starts working, you have learned about the cycles in your school. Right? So there is nothing new about it. So by doing havan, you are contributing to this cycle so that it runs regularly as, as the law has prescribed it to run. Right? So that's, that's the other benefit of it. So there are benefits at personal level and at global level. The third one is prithri yajja. The word prithri me- prithri means parent or elders. Right? So if prithri means on, then why are, what, what yajja can we do for them? Serving them, taking care of them. Those two words together make up seva. Right? I like the word seva better than serving, service, it, it sounds slight like a paid service. Right? Seva sounds much better word, so that is a word you need to at least understand and cling to. When we do seva to our parents or elders with respect and right attitude, it is known as prithri yajja. Right? Why we have to do this? We have to do this because our parents, our grandparents, our neighbors, our communities, our teachers, our acharyas, our professors have contributed in building what we are today. They spend so much energy, so much of their valuable time to make sure that we learn the right things, we become virtuous, we make right choices in life. We have all the comforts in life and many more things which we don't see are given to us by our parents. And as a result of that, it is our utmost duty to return that favor. Returning that favor is known as prithri yajja. Caution. Right? Practice of offering oblations to dead parents and grandparents is wrong or an act of ignorance. I'm not sure kids growing up in this country have seen this, done this, but this is a very common practice. It has also been followed in America, it saddens me a lot, but that is not prithri yajja. Once a person dies, there is nothing you can do about it. Right? The body is cremated or buried. What can you do to that cremated and burned body, ashes, what can you do to those ashes? Nothing. Right? Prithri yajja is done and meant for only living people. Do it while they are alive. If you want to say thank you to your grandfather or your gran- grandmother, say it now. Say it every day. Show your love and care to them every single day, that is prithri yajja. So easy to do, but we overlook these things. They have taken care of you. When you walk in from school, you see your parents sitting there, say namaste, that contributes to prithri yajja. So simple to do, so easy to follow. To me, this is one of the easiest ones to follow. There is no learning mantras, there is no reading books. It's just everyday thing, cultivate that and you have done this duty. So at least you have done one fifth of it without making any efforts, you can start right after this course. Atithee dev yajja. Right? Now, this is something, I'm not sure if par- here we experience this or here we even have this kind of things, but atithee means a guest. Right? But not a guest in the way we understand guest. Our guest comes in at a home, they call us before they come, they text us before they come. They take our appointment before they come or when we go to someone and say, can I come to your home on Sunday at this time, are you free? That is not an atithee. Atithee is someone who comes unannounced, who just knocks at your door. Right? And that is an atithee. And at that time, if we remain composed and we are ready to serve him, we good, take good care of him, we give him a comfort, comfort in our house, nice meal, nice place to sleep, talk with him nicely, discuss, share things with him, learn something from him, then that is observing atithee devyajja. Right? So in India, this used to happen a lot, I don't know if it is happening nowadays, but when I was growing up, every week there was someone I didn't know and had never seen him, will show up at our home and my mom would have already prepared food for them. But in India, they prepare food for one or two extra people anyway. Because if, if there is leftover, that goes into what is going to be the next yajja, they go, go to the domestic animals who come by your doorstep. Dogs and cows and right? So dual, dual purpose to it, but that, that is how guests were taken in. Right? But anyway, in general also, when a guest comes to your home, it is your responsibility to have a chat with him, try to see who he is, what he does, how he can help you, how you can help them. Right? When your friend comes, you have a nice chat with him, but even someone elders comes, it is your responsibility to sit down with them rather than just go in your room and shut yourself out and listen to music. That's not observing atithee devyajja. Atithee devyajja is more about making sure that the guest doesn't feel that he is in an odd place, he is not in a hotel somewhere. Right? So that is atithee devyajja. And the benefit of this, when someone learned comes to your person and you don't spend time with him, you are the loser because he is the one who can teach you something, he can guide you, can give you some tips how to succeed in life. And the last one, bali veshwadev yajja. This is what I talked about, that it is showing kindness and care towards animals. Right? Is basically a bali veshwadev yajja. Right? Not killing any life form, observing non-violence, this came also in, in, in one of the yams where we said ahimsan. Not killing anyone, not hurting anyone. Because every life form in this universe is there for a reason, God did just not make animals of different kinds in this universe. There is an ecosystem which makes this universe work. Right? When that link broke or breaks, then things will have a dysfunctional function. So this is what atitithayev yajja means. Right? It normally includes domesticated animals. In India, that's what we have seen and observed. That's what they will feed them, we pro- we provide for them, they show up every day pretty much at the same time, they are so regular. Right? This promotes mercy and high regards for all life forms physically. So we have a heart of kind and compassion in us for everything and every life form. Right? You get, so we talked about five of them. Baliwaishta, taking care of animals or other life forms, respect for all of all life forms. We talked about atitithi, guest who shows up unannounced. We talked about serving our parents. We talked about benefits of yajja. We talked about Brahma yajja. And we also talked about who is a dev, what good company and charity means. That's it. This concludes this session. Uh topic, I would say, and we can go to the quiz. Read off the question for people, benefit of people are on the audio only. First question, performing Devi yajja helps global warming, plants, environments, animals, all of the above. Brahma yajja includes reading Vedic scriptures, studying mathematics, doing seva, regularly doing daily prayers, all of the above. Third question, what does prithri yajja mean? Neighbor? Teacher? Learned person? Parents or none? The question should be what does prithri yajja mean? Right? Should be what? What does it mean to observe prithri yajja? Last question. Showing care for all living beings is atitithayev yajja, baliwaishta devyajja, devyajja, prithri yajja or brahma yajja? Okay, if everyone is done, we can open up for QA. So who on the call wants to answer the first question rather than me giving away the answer? Performing Devi yajja helps. Anyone can shout out the answer.
All of Deva.
Right answer. Brahma yajja includes reading scriptures, studying mathematics, doing seva, regularly doing daily prayers, all of the above.
Regularly doing daily prayers.
Okay, any other answers?
Doing seva?
The correct answer is reading Vedic scriptures and regular regularly doing prayers. What does prithri yajja mean? Serving neighbors, teachers, learned person, parents or none?
Parents.
Parents, correct answer. Showing care for all living beings is which yajja? Atitithayev, baliwaishta dev, devyajja, prithri or brahma yajja?
Baliwaishta.
Correct. Good job. I don't know any stars to give away, otherwise I would have given you the stars. Okay, any questions on this topic?
Vimalji, do you want to clarify on the bhoot thing, that bhoot is not the ghost in this context? In in baliwaishta devyajja?
Yeah, that that is correct. Baliwaishta yajja has another name which is in the, which is given in the curriculum, which is bhoot yajja. Bhoot does, as we should be saying, that doesn't mean ghost, right? Bhoot is translated as ghost in Hindi or other languages, but not in Sanskrit. The, don't take this as that we have to pray to bhoot or we have to give something to the bhoot, right? Because bhoot is an illusion concept. There is nothing like bhoot. Or there is nothing like ghost. It is just your imagination. Or weakness of your mind in that sense also, right? The the imagined things when our mind is weak. We imagine things if our mind is ignorant. Right? For example, they give in upnishads. In the dark, in in the dark night while walking, if you see that some, an object which looks like a snake and you get scared that it is a snake. But if you put on your flashlight and you notice that it is just a stick or a rope, then your ignorance when cleared out, you saw the object clearly. So bhoot is an illusion of your mind, it's ignorance of your mind, right? When you're not clear about things, when you're weak to understand this, then when you consider that and that concept is a ghost. Thank you, Vimalji. Okay, if there are no more questions, then we can wrap up the session. Closing remarks from Mr. G or Duniya.
So thank you, everybody, for joining this evening in our quest for Vedat. I want to especially thank Vimalji again for putting together this wonderful presentation on the content, especially on a very short notice. I really, again, it's presented in a very clear and concise manner, so really appreciate you doing so. And again, Vimalji, thank you for all your help and guidance so far in spearheading the the Vedat effort and kind of architecting the idea. And we look forward to your continued work. We will be having our next session next Sunday, same time, same place. We'll send the invite for it. The session recording will be posted. If you have liked our Facebook page, you'll notice sample Vedat questions are available. They are being published there now. Some of those very questions that Vimalji presented today may may not end up on the exam as well. So it's a good, good opportunity to pay attention and 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 learn. Alternative, Vimalji, for anything else?
So where we'll get the, all that scripture, whatever he is studying, we saw in the computer?
We will put that in the studio and it will be couple of days before we do that. But once we put on the YouTube, we will post a link of that presentation on the Facebook page. So if you like the Facebook page, you will always be getting the most latest updates from us. We will send emails out as well and one that we need to notice is the the email is coming from the vedat@arismar.com. For the Gmail users, this might go into your update or social or promotions page. So you keep an eye on those folders of an email from vedat@arismar.com.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What are the chapters which will be discussed in our next session?
Um, because we had a little change of sequence this weekend.
Right.
Um, we will try to do chapters three and four next uh next Sunday, but we need to realign the speakers. So give us a, give us a day to work it out and we will post it tomorrow on the Facebook about the about which chapters will be covered in the next Sunday's session. Give us a day.
Thank you very much. Okay.
If you all have any feedback or comments, you can send us an email and we'll be happy to try.